Start the Select Board Meeting of January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at six thirty P. M. And we're going to start with an executive session. So if I could have the Assistant Town Administrator read the agenda for the executive session, please.
Good evening. So the first item under the executive session is meeting with Town Council pursuant to General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one, A and Three, Potential Litigation and Seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements. Public Records Law, General Law, Chapter Four, Section Seven, Parenthesis Twenty-six, Discussed Privileged Legal Opinion Concerning Deed Restriction Regarding Bound Road Homes. Item number two is to meet with Town Council in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one, A, Three, Six and Seven, In Suffolk Construction versus D. Cam, four forty-nine, four forty-four, two thousand and seven, to discuss Thirty-One Hunting Lane, Forty-One North Main Street, and Igor Lebaski Etelle versus the Town of Sherwin, Number Twenty-One, M. I. S. C. P. S. zero 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 one ninety-three, Parenthesis H. P. S. Item number three, Strategy Session to Prepare for Contract Negotiation with Non-Bargaining Employee to General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one, A and Two, and it's for the fire chief contract. You'll need a second in a row call, Mr. Chairman.
Before we get to that, do we have any suggested amendments to the agenda? If not, then I do deem that we need to enter executive session to discuss these three items. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul. Nod, Paul. Eric.
Hi.
And I am I as well. So we'll now go to executive session. I'm gonna pause. Okay, I've started the recording and I'm now gonna start the open session of the Select Board Meeting on the nineteenth of January, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'd like to start by having Assistant Town Administrator read the open session agenda, please.
So after I read the agenda, the Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. For public comment tonight, we have Brian Conley, Library Board of Trustees chair, to make an announcement. Items may be taken out of order, and topics not anticipated forty-eight hours in the V. S. may be added. Item number one is the Consent Agenda, which is the Paywell Warrant Draft Minutes of December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Our next scheduled meeting dates, February second and February twenty-sixth, and we also have a one-day liquor license. Item number two is the request of the Friends of the Sherwin Library for a promoter's license for the craft fair. Christine Walsh, Co-Chief of the Friends of the Sherwin Library, is requesting that promoter's license. Item number three is consideration of acceptance of various grants. We have a Mass Star Complete Street Program Round Two for two thousand and twenty-three from Gino Calucci. The town planner will be here to explain that. The Mass Council on Aging, Sue Callaher for the C. O. A. Director will be here. Acceptance of the Salt and Stale Grant for the Sherwin Library, and acceptance of donation and grants from the Sherwin Fire Department, Zach Ward, Fire Chief. Item number four is ARPA funds. The request for approval is to release the funds. Laurelfield Irrigation Project, Dave Goldberg is here to present facts and ask for the funds to be released, and the Farm Pond Storm Water and Pathway Project, Sean Colleen and G. D. Guthrie will be here to talk about that. Item number five is a discussion and consideration of posting the Finance Director Accountant position. Item number six is consideration of sending the comment letter to the Department of Housing and Community Development for the Washington Street Sherwin Homes Forty-D development. Item number seven is consideration of approval to remain on the Medfield Town Warrant Committee that's being requested by the Town Administrator Jeremy Marseth. Item number eight is a consideration of appointment of the Veterans Officer and Veterans Burial Agent in a hook for a three-year term to expire on June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six. Then, under the two thousand and twenty-four Annual Town Meeting Warrant is the warrant review. And then there's a consideration of referring the three zoning bylaw changes to the planning board. And those are the housekeeping changes to the current zoning bylaw and the numbering re-styled of the current zoning bylaw into Amendment Section Five Point Ten of Ground-Mounted Solar. Item number ten is consideration of routine business, Select Board reports, Town Administrator reports. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Diane. Do I have any proposed amendments or adjustments to the agenda?
Move approval. Second.
Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
And I am I as well. So I will start with Brian. He has an announcement to make.
Great. Thanks, Jeff. I just wanted to announce that the trustees voted on Tuesday to appoint Liz Anderson as the Library Director, taking her from interim to permanent status. And Erin Carroll, who's a trustee and an executive recruiter in her work life, ran an incredible process over, you know, about a hundred days from when Elizabeth announced she was retiring to Tuesday. Recruited a lot of good candidates. There were four finalists that were interviewed. There was a scoring system that was used. It's consistent with town personnel policies as well. But I just want to congratulate Liz. I think Liz has been fantastic for Sherwin over the last five years. She's been here. And we have a bright future in the new building with, under Liz's leadership.
I totally concur with that. I was very pleased. Liz, do you want to say hi or just introduce yourself maybe?
Yeah, hi to everyone I haven't met yet, and thank you so much, Brian and Jeff. And I'm looking forward to getting us back into the building and really revving up our library services. So I look forward to meeting everyone I haven't met so far. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Liz. Great choice. I agree. Do I have a motion of respect to the consent agenda?
Move approval.
I second.
Marion.
Hi.
George.
All right.
Paul.
I had a question about a date, but I vote yes.
Okay, what's the date question?
I'm just trying to find that part of my.
All right, how do you vote, Eric?
About I.
I'm I as well, but if you have a question about the date, we can either resolve it now or offline, whichever you prefer.
I think it's supposed to be, I don't think two twenty-six is a date. I think that's wrong, actually.
Okay.
Now that I'm looking, it should be two sixteen. I think it's a misprint, Diane. I think it's.
You're right. It's typo. I'm sorry, George. I'll change it right now.
It's two sixteen.
Twenty twenty-three. Yes, you're right.
Was that your question, Paul?
Uh. That was one of my questions. Thank you, George. The other question was on the timeline of town meeting. Is that part of this consent agenda or is that?
No.
That's down below.
Town meeting is item nine. We're not there yet.
All right, I, right now I can't find it, so.
Well, let's keep going and you can.
When we get to item nine, Paul, you can talk about town meeting.
Exactly. So then we'll move to, I'm not sure if, I didn't see Christine Walsh here talking about the Friends of the Library Craft Fair. Is she here?
I don't see her either, Jeff. I did notify her that it was gonna be in front of the Select Board tonight. They're looking for the promoter's license for the Sherwin Annual Craft Fair that they're gonna have again this year.
Yep.
Move approval. Cut the short.
Okay.
Second. I wanna tell you. So excited that it'll be back at the library.
It's gonna be on the library grounds this year, Paul, so this really.
Back to back to tradition.
And plant your grass, plant your grass seed, because it's guaranteed to rain whenever there's a live.
Absolutely.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
I am I as well. Thank Christine for us, Brian.
Well, thanks.
Okay, now we have the various grants. Gino, you're the first one.
Okay.
Wherever you are, there you are.
Here I am. This is the Complete Streets Grant that we applied for back in September. It was approved in December. It's in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, and it represents partial payment for a roundabout at the Washington Maple Sanger Streets intersection. The grant is good until December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. And just as a F. Y. I., we are applying for additional grants to cover more of the cost of the roundabout. So that's, that's it. Unless there's any questions.
No.
I was disappointed to hear that we probably won't be able to do it this summer, but as long as we have till two thousand and twenty-four, there's, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to have it done next summer, so.
Do we want to vote on these individually or want to do them in, we should hear each person? Do you want to vote on this one?
I was gonna make a motion, but happy to hold off and do one.
Why don't we just wait and vote on all?
Let's vote on all four, Paul. It's okay. We'll just listen to each of the, like Sue's next, and then we'll vote on all four, I think.
Hi, everyone.
Hi, Sue.
So the M. C. O. A. is the Massachusetts Council on Agings. It's our trade association. And the state had given them some money to extend out to any C. O. A. So we applied for a grant and got awarded eight thousand dollars. And it's gonna be a community and marketing grant to do outreach. And it will align with some of the recommendations that were in the community assessment, including we're gonna be doing a caregiver resource fair and also changing up some of the times of our events to attract different age groups. And so this grant for eight thousand will help us do all of that.
Awesome, Sue. Particularly the caregiver part. I think that's really critical. You're already doing that, I know. So Brian, are you gonna do the Salt and Stale Grant?
Liz is going to.
Oh, all right. Go ahead, Liz. Sorry about that.
No worries. So we, Elizabeth, before she left, had applied for the Richard Salt and Stale Charitable Foundation Grant, and we found out in December that we were awarded the grant in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to be added to the Richard Salt and Stale Operating Fund, which will be managed by the library endowment.
Excellent. And the last one, I'm not sure if they're doing training tonight, or Chief Ward is here.
Mr. Chair, Chief Ward's at training this evening. I can, you know, the next two.
Okay.
There are two sections here. There's two safe grants. There's a safe grant and a senior safe grant totaling four thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars. These are annual grants that the department applies for, which covers the cost of providing fire and life safety education to the community, includes presentations and giveaways to school groups and other groups. And then there is a donation from the O'Connell family in the amount of five hundred dollars. And that is in acknowledgement of the efforts of the department in responding to and containing a serious chimney fire in their home back in November.
So can I make the motion then?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I hope that we accept the four grants mentioned and authorize their expenditure for the purposes for which the grants were given.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
And I am I as well. That's excellent.
Before you go on to the next item?
Yes.
When I made the motion on the Sherwin Library, it was a permit. So also, I believe, was a request that we waive the fee. And I meant to include that, but I guess I didn't articulate that. So could we go back to that item and let me move to, to waive the fee?
Yes, that's fine. We can revote it.
I think I seconded it, so I'm, that's fine.
Yeah, so let's revote quickly. Marion?
Hi.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
I am I as well. Thank you for doing that, Paul. That's a great addition. Now we're gonna move on to the ARPA funding top two topics, and Dave, you're up first.
Sure, thanks. So to catch you, catch everyone up, the last few months, we've been working with a company called Irrigation Consulting. They've been helping us put together irrigation plan and start some of our initial testing over a laurel. As you can imagine, with a project like this, the first phase is determine what our water source is. And that's gonna dictate a lot of the, the plans of, once we know where we're gonna get it from and, and, and the design of the, of the system. We started with testing. We thought we would start with testing whether or not we could do an overburden well, which is a shallower well. And I believe that the Select Board has copies of the results from that testing. Is that true, Diane? I don't know if they got shared. Okay, perfect. So I invited Jeff Bowman from Irrigation Consulting and Ray Tockington from the Geosphere Environmental Management, who actually did the testing, to come and talk through the results of the overburden well testing. And then based off of those results, talk about where we go from here and sort of next steps. So, over to you.
Yes, thanks, everybody. So yeah, so as Dave is mentioning, I think what I'm gonna do, if it's okay, I did prepare a brief PowerPoint. Mr. Chairman, would it be okay if I could control the screen and show the PowerPoint?
Absolutely. I think you're all set.
Perfect, thank you. Turn this up.
Yeah.
One moment. Share my screen. Okay. All right, so can everybody see my screen okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So just a quick little background. My name is Jeff Bowman. I'm a Senior Project Manager at Irrigation Consulting in Nashville, New Hampshire. We are independent irrigation consultants and engineers. Me personally, I've been a practicing irrigation consultant for longer than I like to admit, over twenty-five years now. I met Ray Tockington about twenty years ago, working initially at the Lakewood of the Sockeye Golf Club in the Lakes Region of New Hampshire. Ray's a Ph. D. hydrogeologist, teaches the subject matter at various universities, one being U. N. H. And we've had some, a pretty good track record over the past two decades of doing groundwater exploration for the purpose of irrigation. Ray does work outside of the irrigation market, but that's exactly, that's all we do here at Irrigation Consulting. A few of the projects of athletic field variety that we've done in the past few years are the Town of Lincoln, Massachusetts, where Ray and I did a, an assessment of the site. We're able to drill some wells and had some really good production there. Attleboro High School is one that's currently under construction. Greater Lowell Technical High School, another very successful bedrock well development project. And many, these are just a partial listing of some of our projects together. Initially, what we wanted to establish was, what is the potential irrigation demand of the site? Ideally, we went out and did a site survey using GPS and also some available information online to create a base map to base some of these calculations on. So we're looking at, what is the demand? What sort of permitting implications do we have on the site? What are the possible sources of water to serve the irrigation system? Right out of the gate, we were told that town water's not gonna be an option. We have to source water within the property, so that led us to wells. The types of wells that you would typically use for irrigation would be a shallow overburden well if the material lends itself to well development. And if not, then you get into a deep bedrock well. So we wanted to first determine, is there a possibility to have a shallow, high-yielding overburden well? And let's, let's kind of dig down that, let's go down that road, see what we find. And if it's, if we don't have favorable results, then we'll have to go to another supply, which would be the, the bedrock. And then depending on the yield of the wells, consideration would be to storing up some water, lower-yielding wells, put it into some kind of a reservoir, and then pump out of that reservoir for a short duration, a high flow rate. This is just a snapshot of the existing conditions plan that we, that we prepared out there. The blue represents different regulated resource areas, and then the darker line that's offset from that are various buffer zones. So we identified six potential locations to do boring of the overburden material. And Ray will talk about the results of that, based on a bunch of issues that were encountered during the, the coring process. We, we were able to get three and get data and assess the local, three, you know, data points, three soil borings. So the demand is rough, was based on roughly five and a half proposed acres of turf grass. Not the entire site. The entire site's closer to twelve acres. We did, while we were there, delineate what was striped as playfield the day of our visit. That's gonna vary. But based on what we feel would ultimately need to be irrigated on-site outside of regulated resource areas, that five and a half acres does not include the area to the south, which is in the two hundred-foot riverfront protection area. It's also heavier soils that don't drain well. So we're really looking to irrigate the upland areas that are away from regulated resource areas that really would benefit from having an automatic irrigation system. So that's what the, that's what the five and a half acres corresponds to. And that, the, the water demand is based on the area, the type of grass, and also the local climate data. So based on the five and a half acres and doing some rough, rough calculations, we came up with a thirty thousand gallon per day peak irrigation demand for that area. Okay, so thirty thousand gallons per, thirty thousand gallons per day. Ideally, when you are serving irrigation systems for athletic fields, you don't want to be running that irrigation twenty-four hours a day. You want to run it six to eight hours a night, so that you're not running sprinklers when the fields are in play. And more, there's also an agronomic reason that if you start running irrigation too early in the night, that grass is gonna stay wet and saturated for a long period of time, which will accelerate fungus pressure. So ideally, we would be looking at running irrigation to supply the entire daily demand in six to seven hours. So that thirty thousand gallons per day dispensed over that six to seven-hour range of time duration is about eighty gallons per minute. Okay, so eighty gallons per minute, that's a bit of water. Unlikely, but not impossible, that it could be sourced from bedrock wells. It'd be more likely to be able to be sourced out of overburden sand and gravel wells. Again, Ray's gonna speak about the results of that. To, to come up with that daily requirement on a lower-yielding well, you'd require twenty-five gallons per minute. So if you drill a well or wells, and those wells in aggregate would yield twenty-five gallons per minute, you then could yield that thirty thousand gallons in about twenty hours a day. We all, we don't ever want to run a well, a well pump twenty-four hours. It should rest for a few hours a day. So that's, twenty-five is, is kind of like the minimum yield that would, we'd be looking for, for any well design, whether or not it's one, two, or five wells. Okay? And on the permitting, just kind of working through the slide here, from a permitting standpoint, as long as the wells are located out of regulated resource and buffer zone, then we will be looking at Water Management Act withdrawal permits. The thirty thousand gallons per day is not enough water that would trigger a State of Massachusetts Water Management Act withdrawal permit. So from a, as long as we locate the wells outside of jurisdictional areas, and we keep our daily demands at thirty, from a permitting standpoint, we're in pretty good shape. Now, what is, what is thirty thousand gallons of water over that twelve-acre site? Now let's think about what's happening with the, with the hydrogeology beneath it. That's only, it's less than one-tenth of an inch of water. If you reply, one-tenth of an inch of water over the laurel site, it would be about thirty thousand gallons, just to give kind of a frame of reference, how much water that is. Here's a, a image of the crew on-site during, this is at Laurel. This is actually the day, the morning of. They used a push-pull, and, and you know what? I think I'm gonna stop right there and introduce Ray Tockington, who's the hydrogeologist who, you know, it's Geosphere that was interpreting this data. Ray, would you mind introducing yourself and discussing the, the process and the results?
Ray Tockington, Geosphere. Been doing groundwater exploration for many, many, many years in all types of terrain, sandy gravel or bedrock. This is, it's always nice to do sand and gravel. Sometimes the interpretation of the data is a little bit easier than bedrock. But nevertheless, we, we, as Jeff said earlier, we wanted to go first with sand and gravel, because that's a lot easier to work with and manage, and a little bit less costly in some cases. So we use this method called direct push. Essentially, it leaves no footprint on the site as opposed to other methods, which can be pretty messy out there. And what it does is it simply vibrates the, the drill core down into the subsurface, and every several feet, by every five feet, it gets retracted. They pull out an acetate sleeve, and within that acetate sleeve is a sand and gravel material that's below ground surface. So we know, as we're going down, zero to five is here, five to ten, so we can see the material. Not only the texture of the material, but the color of the material is very important, too, as we go into the subsurface. Now, sometimes what happens is that when you get down below the water table and you're into groundwater, the materials are defined, they, they, they're called running sands, and they want to push back up. The drill core is going down. So it makes advancing it very difficult, and that's what happened out here in all the locations. And that's why it took a little bit longer to do the drilling. We were only out there for one day, by the way. So it took a little more, a little longer than we thought, but we tried to space the points out to get the maximum on information, the subsurface information. Did I do that?
I did it, Ray.
Oh, you did. So what we did is, is, is we showed the various six locations out there, and we actually went to three locations called S. B. A., S. B. D. and S. B. E. to try to get as much information as we can about what's going on in the subsurface. Now, little did we know that historically, this used to be a gravel pit. So lo and behold, all the good material is presumably taken out. And what's required is you must leave a buffer about four to six feet above the groundwater table. You just cannot mine into the water table. So as we went down, going down, we find that the, the depth of groundwater is, you know, four to five feet below ground surface, which is exactly what you'd expect. And the materials tend to be this fine sand, or maybe medium in some cases. In some cases, flowery-like material that was brown in color. And then as soon as we hit twenty feet, it became gray in color, and almost like fine, fine beach sand, really fine beach sand. And it was not, it's not conducive, this type of material, the gray material, because it typically, in my experience, all throughout New England and other places, it usually means it's gonna be elevated iron and manganese in the water. And that's a real negative when it comes to irrigation, because that may mean that Jeff may have to design a treatment system to remove iron and manganese. So if we can avoid that, we do that at all costs. What we did is we found all throughout the site, almost uniformly, at exactly twenty feet below ground surface, we hit this boundary of this brown material to this fine-grained gray material. So that material, the fine-grained material, does not transmit groundwater readily. Think about putting a straw in a milkshake, a really thick milkshake, and trying to suck on that, and be difficult to get any out. That's kind of what this is like. It's very, very difficult to get it out. So our, our recommendation here is that an overburden well, as much as we'd like to see it, really is not gonna work here. It's just not recommended at all to do something like this. Next, do we have a next one?
Yeah, so just moving forward to the next.
So you can, you can go on, you can talk this, Jeff.
Yeah, no, just so, being that it, it looks as though an overburden sand and gravel well is not gonna be feasible there. We're looking at the next alternative, which are, are deep rock wells, deep bedrock wells. And Geosphere has worked with us on many projects for bedrock well locations through something called a fractured trace analysis, where Ray and his team use very high accuracy or high-resolution air photos to help look at fault lines in the earth's crust. And it's those, it is intersecting fault lines in, in the earth's crust that have a higher concentration of fractures in the bedrock, and it's, it's fractures in the rock that actually convey the water. Straight bedrock, obviously, is not gonna be able to flow any water through it. So we're trying to find. So we're trying to find uh, fractures in the rock to drill wells that will uh, produce more water. Cause when you drill into straight rock without fractures or vein, uh, they're not gonna yield a lot of water. So we certainly would.
But the more fractures we find on the fracture trace analysis, the, the higher the likelihood that we're gonna hit water. We never know how much water or what depth, typically, we don't know what depth. Uh, but the higher the concentration of fractures, the greater the likelihood of um, of finding water and, and larger quantities of water.
Sure.
Using, using this, using this method, um, and I use it a lot for, for municipal water supplies too. We've, we've encountered, you know, one million gallons a day in fractured rock. Um, typically, it's more a hundred and fifty to, to three or four hundred gallons um, per minute, uh, which is a lot of water. And as Jeff's analysis saying, we're, if we can get eighty gallons a minute, this is super for this site. So, go.
I should, I should warn you, we're pretty used to this, cause every one of us has their bedrock well problem.
Oh.
Yeah, so we're waiting. We don't have a public water supply in Sherburne, so every single uh, resident has a, a private well.
Maybe you could let us know at this point, uh, do you have an answer?
Well, then, then.
Any data?
The next step would be to do the fracture trace analysis and determine um, the best locations onsite for uh, bedrock wells.
Right.
And then, and then actually go drill those wells to see what the yield would be. Um, there's, as, as Jeff kinda pointed out, there's no guarantees, right? We know we need the uh, eighty gallons per minute. Um, if we don't get the eighty gallons per minute, then that changes, may significantly change our design where we need to have uh, some way of capturing the water. So we would trickle the water into a pond or into um, some sort of holding tank. Uh, but all of it's gonna, it's gonna hinge off of what, you know, essentially what we get when we drill the wells. So, yes, next step from our side is, um, what we're requesting is a release of uh, of a hundred thousand dollars based off of Jeff's uh, recommendation on, on what he believes it's gonna take to do the fracture trace analysis and drill, at least have a budget to drill two wells, uh, should we need it. Um, and then once we've uh, done that, we, we should be able to formulate a plan and, and design for, for the actual irrigation system. Um, worst case scenario, obviously, that we have, we don't get enough water at all. Um, in which case, we might have to abandon the plan or come up with something creative, but um, but we have to, you know, we eventually have to just drill and find, you know, see what we find.
I know the bedrock doesn't, you know, it, it's very variable and, and you know, could be near in one place and not in another, but have you talked at all with the Board of Health? Because the Rockland Street there, I think some of the residents have drilled new wells. That's not very far south of what, uh, where Laurel Field is. You know, Board of Health data, has data on every well that's been drilled in Sherburne, going back forever. So they have a lot of well data.
Yeah, certainly, we could, uh, we have not as of now, but certainly that could be.
It may not, it may, it, they may have some studies or there may have been test pits or other um, I, you know, cause um, you're right that this, uh, all the topsoil was removed by the person that donated, I'm told by the, donated the property of the town, but the Army Corps of Engineers came in the nineteen seventies and reworked this whole field. So um, this was a pretty big Army Corps project and I forget sometime, maybe you, I don't know, know when Dave, but it's in the nineteen seventies, George Fisk managed it, so I know that. So um, anyway, um, uh, I have a few more questions, but Marion has her hand raised. So why don't you go Marion and then uh, we can um, discuss it further with the board.
Uh, sure, it sounds like you're, you're taking the right, you know, logical steps here. Uh, how far do you think you can get in this project to drilling the wells, making the tanks, whatever you need? How far can you go with the uh, money that, the ARPA money that we've tentatively committed to this? That's three hundred and fifty thousand, have you figured that out? Can you get all the way to well drilling and uh, testing?
Yeah, I mean, that's a question I've constantly asked Jeff, he's probably sick of me asking him that question, which is uh, you know? Hey, look, we wanna make sure that, you know, we're being responsible and that in the end, if the town's gonna spend the money, we're gonna have um, some fields irrigated. I, I guess I'll, I'll, you, uh, sure, no guarantees, but.
So, so I think we should, we should at least formulate a, a playbook here on if then, if we encounter this much water, this is what we can do. If we, if we get this level of water, then this is what we can do. So we like to sort of map it all out beforehand. If, it's all gonna hinge, as Dave mentioned, on the yield of the well or wells. If we hit a lot of water and we get really seventy, eighty gallons per minute out of a couple of eight-inch wells, now I will say that the, the budget of one hundred thousand dollars are for eight-inch wells that have been hydrocracked. A lot of conventional irrigation wells or home wells are six-inch. We're, we're putting our best foot forward here in putting in eight-inch wells to maximize their productivity. Okay, so if two wells are shy of our target yield, then we have to look at putting in a reservoir, which is a substantial investment. So for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, if we find the water uh, in two wells, then we really should be able to irrigate most of what we ideally want to irrigate within the budget. However, if we have to start investing in storage reservoirs, which I would recommend storage tanks as opposed to a pond, but there's, we haven't gotten that far down the road with the engineering of it all, but let's just say conceptually, if we're going with storage tanks. Uh, now you'd be investing the hundred thousand dollars on the wells, you'd be investing probably another hundred thousand dollars or even more on a storage system. Now we're only looking at a hundred thousand dollars or so uh, for the axle distribution system for irrigation, which still is gonna get you a couple of fields. So I think we could pretty much safely say, unless our wells are dry, you're not able to get it, which I don't think is gonna happen, but you never know, anything, everything is possible here. But assuming that we do find um, some water for the budget of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we can have irrigated field or fields. I just don't think we make, what's gonna be sacrificed is the full five and a half acres of irrigation. But I, I, I think we can deliver a, a, one or two high-efficiency complete irrigation system or systems at the site. I think that's a good.
We've already, yeah, we've already discussed prioritization if we have to, if we have to um, prioritize certain fields over others and say, look, we will, we will put all of the necessary pipes in for later on, like essentially phase it. Like these are our phase line fields. And we will, as part of the project, make sure that we've got the infrastructure in place to then go add later on, we can, uh, so it, it really is just gonna come down to uh, you know, how, to Jeff's point, how much of the total area that we wanna irrigate, are we gonna be able to? But um, but again, uh, Jeff's done this before and he feels pretty confident that we're gonna get, we're gonna get some irrigation um, with that, you know, with that amount of money, assuming we get water, right?
Right, yeah, and I like to use the word scalable, the irrigation system that is, if we're not able to irrigate our, our wildest dream of irrigation system, but the, the, the scope is not as big as we're hoping. It will be scaled so that when through fundraising or whatever financial sources are available to us, um, we then in later years can add on to the system. But the, the spine of it, the bones of it are gonna be large enough to support the complete built-out system.
I have two other questions and I'd like to see if the board has any other questions. One is, I'm presuming that uh, they're quite a distance away, but the impact on a butter's wells would be looked at? Any potential impact on the butter's wells? Like, would you monitor butter's wells to see if they, if you're doing your, I'm assuming you'll do a flow rate test if you do discover a, a bedrock source. So would you typically monitor any of other's wells, are they too far away for that, you think?
Well, we'd have to find out how close the residential wells, I've, I've done this many times.
Yeah, I, I know your experience.
And, and actually had to monitor residential wells, one time they had to monitor sixty-five residential wells. Um, this is a lot, but what we would do is it, we would do, when we do the fracture trace analysis, we'll get an idea of where the, the fractures are, we believe the fractures are below subsurface and whether any of those fractures are in the direction of residential wells. And we can, if we hit the water, which I'm sure we will, hit the water, how much we're gonna hit them, how much we're gonna pump? And then we can actually put recording pressure transducers down rest, certain residential wells. And we can come to you folks and we can agree to which ones we wanna do and monitor those during any, during any flow tests that we have.
We did, yeah, we, we've done that for other projects in town, so we're familiar with that. And the last one is, you know, based on last summer, there was such a severe drought. I'm just, you know, concerned about, and many of the towns around here had to uh, uh, cease all of their uh, irrigation systems because of the drought.
Um, my experience, bedrock wells typically don't react acutely to um, drought conditions. Um, but as a lag time, it may, you may not see it till next year or with all the rain we've had, uh, uh, in, in the infiltration of the, the surface water into the groundwater, they've been recharged, so they're probably back up to where they normally are. But this is one thing, we do monitor that, just to see where are the water levels? Typically, bedrock wells don't fall, uh, sand and gravel wells. And that's why, if we did a shallow sand and gravel well out here, I, I wouldn't even recommend it because it's too shallow because under drought-like conditions like we've had, in some cases we've had severe drought, you can get three to ten-foot fluctuation in water levels. And if you did that, those wells would be dry. Uh, you'd never be able to use them.
Eric, did you wanna add anything on this?
Yeah, honestly, it's just about checking the surrounding wells, not for the drawdown, but for the chemistry. Cause once you go bedrock, you can, I know there's iron and manganese and overburden, but you can also get um, was it calcium and magnesium for hardness? And I know Sherburne wells do have hardness in them, which can also cause fouling as well. So um, there's a couple nearby wells, I was looking at a map. Uh, you might even check with the Board of Health, not to, for yield and for um.
Yep.
I mean, yield varies if you hit a fracture or not, but also check just for simple chemistry. You know, I'm a little worried about once you go bedrock, just have a different, different type of fouling, to be honest, and um, and that's it.
Okay, we, we can, but that can be added into what we do. I mean, in terms of the chemistry of the, we'll take waters, we have to take water samples of the bedrock well cause Jeff needs that uh, to understand if treatment is, is or is not needed.
Um, and part of the drilling specs that, that we'll be putting together to have this work did, there's a very comprehensive water chemistry requirement. So they're gonna be, they're gonna be testing if it's submitting the data to us for interpretation.
And we can also, we can also look at what the Board of Health has in terms of any water quality uh, from the installation of the wells, I don't know if they do anything on a periodic basis, but we can take that and compare that to what we see in this.
I think it'd be, be helpful probably in your, in your thinking anyway. That Mark Oram is the uh, agent for the Board of Health and he's been the agent for probably twenty-seven years or something. So he, he knows pretty many uh, of the wells that have been drilled in town.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion from the select board?
Just a.
Go ahead, Paul, you're kinda breaking up a little bit, though.
So in one of my other towns, I was listening to some guy talk about sprinklers as not being a good way to do irrigation, because too much is lost through evaporation and pooling and running off and so on and so on. Rather, it's better to have these irrigation underground. It's much more controlled, and if you do it underground, you use much less water. Is that true? Is your calculations based on sprinkler systems or are you talking about some kind of underground system?
No, so here's, here's the, so I would completely agree with, with your assertion that drip irrigation, we call that drip subsurface irrigation, is way more efficient than sprinkler irrigation. It is approximately twenty-five percent more, more efficient, okay? The problem with trying to use drip irrigation on athletic fields is that uh, there will be soil aeration, um, cultural practices that occur through the season. And if you put drip irrigation on, on an athletic field, it will be destroyed soon. Uh, it would probably be less than two seasons and that, that pipe has been punctured through mechanical aeration equipment or through other methods. So we have to understand um, the, the audience, if you will, who we're dealing with here with this irrigation system. They're, they're really, um, I don't think this would be appropriate. We, we have certainly looked at using drip irrigation on sports fields in many different occasions, but it's just, it's not practical um, by the way that this, this site is gonna be managed. And there's probably gonna be a lot of, there could even be core, uh, deep core um, sands um, uh, broadcast on the, on the site as well. There's a lot of different cultural practices to maintain athletic fields, all of which are somewhat invasive through the root zone. And if you're using drip irrigation, it's gotta be close to the root zone of the plant. It can't be, it can't be so deep that it's protected, you're not gonna get the capillary rise to get up into the root zone of the, of the turf. So, uh, you know, in theory, it sounds like a great idea, but for, for flat sports fields like this, I just, I think it'd be uh, it'd be a maintenance headache for starters.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, I think it's worth pursuing, you know, we really felt that, you know, this field is uh, was never really good from the get-go when they removed the topsoil and did the reconstruction. So um, it makes sense to me to investigate further and I'm sure there'll be stages along. Maybe you may find that you get fifty thousand dollars in and decide that you have to do something different, Dave, but you know? So what you're asking for tonight is for authorization to spend up to a hundred thousand dollars of the ARPA funding on this?
Yeah, yeah, and um, like again, that's to cover the fracture trace analysis and up to what we believe would be two wells.
Two test wells, or it could be permanent well.
No, for like, like full, full wells.
Yeah, yeah.
And if, you know, at, at that point, if uh, you know, for some reason, we're not getting the yield we, we want, then to your point, we have to, we have to change course, but.
Punt, punt, yep, okay. So, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Paul.
So I, I, I support this, I, I think if you recall back when we had a discussion about putting turf fields here, there was the pushback that, you know, why don't we try taking care of the fields naturally better? And providing that is a safer alternative to the, to the artificial turf fields. Having, having got to that conclusion at town meeting that we, we don't wanna do the artificial turfs, fields, it seems to me like we need to, we need to follow what town meeting essentially left us. The only alternative, namely, let's invest in making these fields work. Why should we invest in, in athletic fields? Because they're good for our, our children, it's good for athletics, it's all part of the, the health of our community. It's part of the quality of life in Sherburne, so it's the kind of investment that, that we should be making. So I, I, I'm gonna vote yes.
Well, we have to have a motion before you're allowed to vote, but Marion has her hand raised.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that we approve up to a hundred thousand dollars, what's needed to do the well work proposed here.
Well, sir. I would, I would actually like, I would like to see a presentation on the farm pond before I vote. I would like to vote on, see them both before I vote.
The farm pond, meaning the next item on the agenda?
Next item with the, the other ARPA request.
Yeah, I think we've allocated already to both, so I'm not sure it's either or, but we can certainly do that. We, so we could just withhold the vote until uh, we hear um, from the Sean and Jeannie.
But if that's the case, then why are we voting now?
Well, we originally had allocated three hundred and fifty thousand for the Laurel Field, but we don't know that we're gonna wanna spend all that money, uh, you know, Dave's basically um, piecing the project, I'm putting words in your mouth, Dave, but he's, he's, you know, trying to get further along in the project to know what is the best course of action. So I think we've allocated three hundred and fifty thousand for the irrigation, but we wouldn't spend that if we found out there the wells weren't productive or something. So I don't think these are, I don't think these are competing with each other, is what I'm saying.
So can I suggest that we accommodate the request?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that.
See, my feels, he needs that, let's.
Yeah, I just, one thing, Eric, just to, I mean, uh, Jeff, just to clarify, is according to our packet, we have a balance of three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, but we have three hundred and fifty thousand for irrigation for Laurel Field, Fields and a hundred and ten thousand for farm pond plus a thousand for future needs. So that's five hundred and sixty thousand, that's a hundred and eighty thousand over what our balance is. So that's why I kind of agree with Eric, like, we've gotta, we gotta figure out what we're actually spending this money on before we can. I mean, I think, trust me, I fully support this irrigation for Laurel Fields, but we, we can't spend more than what we have.
Mr. Chair, can I make a comment on that?
Uh, well, let me uh, clarify these things. So let's hold on your motion for a minute, Marion, do you have another comment or you just want?
I was just gonna, I was just gonna clarify what, what George just said, cause it's not right.
Uh, go ahead, Sean.
You're not over the balance, the way, these monies are already, you, you already committed these monies. You're not over the balance. The way these monies are already, you already committed these monies towards these projects. They're just asking for a portion of what was already committed, not above and beyond it. And I'm going to be asking for a portion of what was committed to Farm Pond, not even the entire thing.
I'm looking at a, I'm looking at a spreadsheet. That was in our packet. It shows total deposits of 1,295. Total spending of 916, leaving a balance of 379,000.
It's wrong.
But I think this.
It's not represented right.
Where did the spreadsheet come from that came in our packet then?
I don't know. I don't have it.
No, but the the 350 is in the 916 already, I think.
No, I don't think, it's not, though. That's that's where I'm concerned. And my question was, in that 916, did we get some of that, like, I know the Woodland. Leland Water Project was in there. There's some other things like, did we get other funding for some of those other items? Like. I'm just looking at the spreadsheet. Who provided the spreadsheet? Did this come from Deb? Did this come Jeremy? If you could comment on it, like, I just, do we only have 379,000 left is my question?
So, yeah, this summary was provided by the finance director, the interim finance director. So this is from Deb, the accounting. There is at least one project that we're aware of that we have additional grants for. So the digitizing of town records. That currently had $241,000 of funds appropriated towards it. We may only, there's a $100,000 grant for digitization that could offset that. So.
Okay.
There's a potential, there's another $100,000 in ARPA funds available. But. George, your your analysis of this spreadsheet is correct. In that. If all of those few, the proposed projects, all of those were appropriated as shown, there would be a negative balance. However, as I mentioned, there's at least one project that has some funds that need to come, that that may come back into the 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 pot of ARPA funds.
So let me ask a question and make a little logistics. Yes, we allocated funds. I remember that vote, you know, I was kind of begrudgingly, whatever, I probably wouldn't vote the same now after seeing Dan's presentation last Saturday. But nonetheless, we we allocated those funds. Why these individual votes? And so we allocate, let's say, 350. So they stay, and I appreciate that they come and give us a status. I actually do appreciate that. I'd like this way. They show it's not overburdened. It's going to go to bedrock or so on and so forth. Were those just kind of feel good votes? And these are the real votes that actually allocate the funds?
I'm not sure. Let's, let's see. That's a very good question, Eric. Let's see if maybe Dan Sickel can help us here, Dan.
Hey, everybody.
For people that don't know, Dan is the chair of our, we call, in Sherburne, we call our finance committee the advisory committee. And Dan is the chair of our finance committee.
Thanks, and thanks for the presentations this evening. So I just popped up the minutes from your meeting on August 25. When I believe you did the ARPA approvals. And what those minutes indicate is that. The projects that were approved were town solar, town campus improvements. The digitizing of land records and tree removal. And I think there was a discussion and an understanding and a sense that. The irrigation project and the farm pond were the leading projects for the balance of the funds. But I don't believe you ever took a vote to actually allocate any funds beyond the four projects. That I just mentioned. So just, you know, again, I I jumped back to to look at what what actually the vote was at that prior select board meeting.
Well, I think there's something we need to follow up on, because George raised a good point, because somehow there's other projects on the list that. Were funded.
Right. If you look at that spreadsheet, Jeff, you see the spreadsheet.
I did, yeah. And I don't recall voting on all those things that are above the line either. So I don't know. For example, I thought, didn't, didn't we get a some kind of an earmark or something for the Leland Farms Woodhaven Water Project? I think that shouldn't be included. So I think we need to. Reconstitute that list a little bit and look at it a bit further.
And as, and as Jeremy said, if we had some. Other, I think we got a grant for some of the digitizing, like, let's.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe at the next meeting, I. It's hard to vote. I mean, trust me, Dave, Dave knows. I fully support doing this for Laurel Fields, but we can't. Vote on things until we know what we have left in our, actually know what we have left in our buff.
Yeah.
But if he's only. 100,000 tonight, we're fine. But. At the same time, I just want some clarification as to what we actually have left in our funds to spend.
Yeah, that's all true, but I wouldn't want to spend 100,000 if we think that's all we have, because you can't do anything for 100,000. That's just.
No, no, no. What is, what this spreadsheet is saying is we have 379,000 left, but if we add, add to that, that's 479,000. I just, I think before we vote, we all should be very clear as to what we have left for our funds.
I think that's true. I concur with that. So. What I would suggest is let's. Let's go on with the second presentation and hear that. And I think we're going to have to do a further analysis. To just understand where we are. I realize that could delay your. Decision making, Dave, but I think we probably do need to just straighten out. The the accounting and make sure that we aren't double counting anything and we don't have funding for some things that came from earmarks or other sources. So. I think that's what we should do. Any any other select board comments on that? All right, so.
I would just like to add, yeah, I let, let's see the next one and then I'll make another statement on this and so on.
All right, that sounds good. So Sean, Jeannie, who's going to talk about Farm Pond?
Sean.
Okay.
I would prefer, in light of the last discussion, and not even talk, I, I was under the impression, and I've asked this question 10 times and got nine different answers. If that money's not allocated, now's not the time for me to present this. I have no interest in making this presentation right now for for what we were going to do. If, if, because it's, it's, it's going to come across wrong. I, I was under the impression there was 125 or 150,000 committed. If that's not the case. Then. Let's just come, I'll come back when you guys, when, when, when there's clarity of how much money there is to be spent.
I, I, Sean, I fully agree with you. I think. I want to be clear as to what we voted on and what we have left. Before we vote on anything, because I'm not confident in this spreadsheet. Or what we voted on, because I know we supported the Laurel Fields and I know we supported the Farm Pond. Stuff. So I just don't know if the spreadsheet I'm looking at is true. And I want to know that we do have enough money to continue to do those Laurel and Farm Pond things, which I think were very important. So, so if we could get some clarification before our next meeting as to what we've actually voted on spending and what we've. Got left, that's an important piece before we can actually say we can spend any more money.
Yeah, I'd rather focus on that because there's.
Yeah.
There's no.
I mean, like, like I said, I'm not against any of these projects. I want to be very clear. I just would be voting on something that we don't have the money for.
Makes sense.
And and timing wise, the season, you know, I, we're not going to get the Farm Pond project designed and done before this this coming summer. Not that they're going to have the irrigation up, but. The. They may lose more time than than we would on the Farm Pond thing. It's going to take some time to permit everything with the Farm Pond thing. So. A couple of weeks to figure it out. Nobody's going to be comfortable to to vote on it. I'd rather wait.
Okay, that's a good, so that's what we'll do. Dan, you had your hand up. Can you help us with the analysis?
Just a little bit. So I pulled up the spreadsheet.
Not tonight necessarily, but you can do it, yeah.
But just, just one quick comment.
Yeah.
I, I pulled up the spreadsheet that I think you're all looking at, and I think the numbers on the spreadsheet, I believe are correct. I think the issue is. What is everybody's understanding of exactly what you voted on and approved back in August and in earlier meetings? And the issue is that some of these projects are going to come in. Like the digitizing of town records that perhaps less than what's estimated in the spreadsheet because of earmarks and other things. And so there's some adjusting of the numbers that could be done. On the spreadsheet. There isn't enough money to fund all the things that have been talked about, but perhaps with earmarks and other things coming in, it may be that it turns out that that there is. So I think the spreadsheet is basically correct, just with needing some updating and adjustment for those considerations.
Yep.
I agree, because if we get 100,000 from digitizing. And maybe we don't do the 100,000 reserve for future health needs or whatever, then we've got, we're there, we're positive. We can do the 350 for Laurel and 110 for the Farm Pond, but I just need some clarification. I can't be approving anything when we're showing 180,000 negative on a spreadsheet that I'm looking at.
Yep. All right. Eric, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, it's just a general statement, as always, just that. I've made my reservation clear in general, but it's ARPA funds, but I would be disingenuous not to, you know, push these projects. Continued reservation on what Dan presented last Saturday about the fiscal cliff that we're hitting, that we, we actually kind of. Reviewed $1 million of capital funds for FY24, but yet we gave Sue Callahar a hard time for five hours. I just think that, you know, I'm not going to approve any of these projects beyond what we actually initially did them for. If a project has good merit. And we use this work to actually, let's say, this project, I think it was great research on it. But if that has good merit and you've used up your funds, it goes to town meeting. I just, I've been iffy with this project with the process in the beginning. I think we're actually bypassing town meeting and the. We're bypassing the actual voice of the voters by having the select board just make these special projects that don't get vetted by town meeting. I still think ARPA should only fund projects that are approved by town meeting. But I, that's just a general statement. Yeah, we've gone this far. This is actually great work, great presentation. And. And I'm not going to be disingenuous and change my mind. I was tempted to do it, but to change my vote on what we proved before. But I'm going to limit myself to just whatever, whatever we voted for before and no more than that. So. That's my general statement.
Okay.
But it's a procedurally. It. Do you need us to come back and present again? Like, what if there are questions like?
I don't think you need to.
Playing out.
I don't think I see you need to present again, because we know the content of the presentation now. I think we just need to.
Yeah.
Think about it financially. So we may need.
It's more of a logistic issue on our end, Dave. So I really think. We're confused as to where we stand, so it's really our fault, not yours.
Yeah.
A good presentation. Brought all the information to us, so.
No, I'm with you.
And all five of us are here right now. And to be honest, I'm probably the most, most one to be convinced, and I think you did a great job. I'm showing the merits of this, to be honest with you. It's not about the merits anymore. It's all.
Okay, I just, I was more thinking like if questions came up, we were opening it for debate again when you vote, then I need to make sure. You know, I have the resources there to answer any questions that come up.
Yeah, no. Yeah.
And I'd like to thank Jeff and Ray also for for your time tonight. Sorry to bog down in our town financial.
No. It, 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 it worked out well, I think. I don't think we would need them to come back. You, you might need to come back, Dave.
Yeah, of course. I'm available.
I think the presentation was great, so I agree with that and we'll work it through. So.
Yeah.
Keep the faith.
It's a logistical issue more than. Your, nothing to do with your presentation or questions about what you're doing.
Yep. So thank you again. Sean, Sean, did you want to close this out here?
I was gonna, you never actually put this out to everyone else. And I don't know if other people had questioned, but I wanted to point out that. While, before they get off, we have two of the smartest guys I've met as far as irrigation and. And wells. And if anyone has any questions, they should do it now, because we're, yeah, they're not going to pay Jeff and Ray to come back. For another meeting like this, but they make awesome presentations to the rec.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
They should take that opportunity, even though it's, you know, it's obvious how it's going to go, but. If nothing else, at least I thank them for coming. It was great.
It was very good.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
You're welcome, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Yep.
Okay. Next item is consideration of posting the finance director account position. Jeremy, are you introducing that?
Sure, I'm happy to. So you've, the town has had an interim finance director for some time, as the board is aware, it's that. That individuals has done an admirable job in the interim role. But I think as the discussion we just had regarding ARPA funds points out, I think. It's time for the town to move forward with, you know, searching for and hiring somebody more, you know, in a. A longer term. Position in that role. So in your packet, you will find there's the job description and a draft of a prior post job posting. This position is appointed by the board of selectmen. However, on daily, it reports to the town administrator. There was a bylaw update this past spring that clarified that daily reporting. And if the board would like to proceed to fill this position permanently, we'd suggest. That there a small screening committee be formed, a member of the select board, a member of advisory and myself. To start that process and to help screen individuals that. Talk about a process, create a process, bring forward some candidates for the board to consider.
Okay, that sounds good. George?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, Jeremy, you kind of addressed it in what you said with the. What you posted, what you had for initial posting, I think you need to change some of the words in there, just to say that. With the bylaw change that we made last year, that it reports to the town administrator rather than working with the town administrator. So. Just a little bit of language wordsmithing to make it, make it match up with the bylaw that we that we did, but. I think it's definitely time. I'm sure there's some great internal candidates that are going to apply for this as well. Deb's done a great job and. That we can, we can post this and do a. A full search as we would for any position and hire the best person, so.
Yep.
Was that a motion?
I'll make a motion, yes, that we should revising it to match the the changes that we made in the warrant last year. That, yes, we, I'll make a motion that we should post this position and and form the committee to. Headed by the town administrator to do this.
Are you seconding it, Paul?
Actually, can I, just clarity, do we actually want to make this a committee formed by the select board or just advise the town administrator? To get appropriate representation? I think that might be important when it comes to certain, we want to have some confidentiality and maybe some might have some issues with. What do you call it? The open meeting law?
No, I like this idea of one select board member, one advisory member and the town administrator. I think that's. Especially for this position, it's very important to include advisory and I know, I actually mentioned it to Dan and I had a conversation about this. I think Dan. And his financial background really could be a good resource to to use. And when we hired, I think the last time we did a. Finance director hire, I was involved as a member of advisory before I was on a select board. I think, and the only other person you might want to consider is our. Is our town moderator, because she appoints advisory. She's somebody who's. Very good and been involved in this process many times. I don't know if you want to include her in the committee, but. That could be a good resource as well.
My point is like, if, if, if the select board. You know, creates a committee, I thought there was more things where it's official and certain open meeting law issues, where if the. Town administrator simply gathers people to advise him, it's different. And I strongly believe in confidentiality in situations like this.
I wanted to follow up on that. I'm the lawyer on the board and I want to concur with what Eric is saying. If you create a committee, then you have to follow the open meeting law. And with the open meeting law, yes, you can do preliminary screening. It's a search committee. But you, then you have to have interviews in public. Sometimes people are hesitant to apply for a job when you have an open meeting law situation, because. They may hold other jobs and they don't want to lose those jobs, even if they're in the finalist pool, they don't get appointed. And their current job. Could be at risk. So. The way around that is to simply have the town administrator. Be responsible. For. Making the, the. The nomination, let's say, to the select board.
But you can have an advisory group.
Yeah.
With a, with a group that.
That makes, oh, yep. So, so let me change it to my, my motion will be. Post this and have an authorized town administrator to form an advisory group. Outside of, you know, on his own to to consult on the applications.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
Do I have a second?
I would second that. I second.
Okay, Marion?
Yeah.
George?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Eric?
Mike.
And I am I as well. So you can have some discretion, I guess I would say it sounds like in terms of who needs to be on. George's idea of the moderator is a good one, but. You know. I think make sure it's an odd number, so you don't have a high vote, but other than that. I think make sure it's an odd number, so you don't have a high vote, but other than that, it's good to go.
We shouldn't give too much input on to, uh, who. Jeremy's a smart guy. He knows our structure already.
I appreciate it. We'll, we'll move forward. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. The next, uh, item is, uh, Marion's been really leading on this and it's in your packet. As we call the Washington Street, um, Sherwin Homes project, we committed to give our response to DHCD on the twenty third of January. Which is Monday. So she and I worked and drafted some material on. Monday afternoon of this week, and then she spent pretty much all day Wednesday, uh, reworking it and fine tuning it. So it's in, in very good shape. I think, um, and so, um. I guess Marion, do you want to give a little intro and we can see if there's any comments from the select board?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I didn't, there were some typos and Jeannie Guthrie was very helpful in pointing out. Uh, this and that that I fixed. Uh, so with all the back and forth. I didn't send it to the select board until about three o'clock this afternoon. So I apologize that, that it was this late. But, um, it's, it's a, it's a nine-page letter with two maps attached. And we don't want to go through it here in the meeting. It would take much too long. So, um, if any was, if anyone has had time to actually read through it. Be happy to hear your thoughts about it.
So here's my thoughts. If it's good enough for Marion, it's good enough for me. I didn't have a chance to read it.
Well, it's very good. I've re, I've reviewed it. Also, and it also, it reflects, a lot of it is, um. It has several components. We wrote sort of an executive summary, but it also summarizes what's already in, we'll attach all of the individual boards and committees letters to. But, but we, part of the nine pages she referred to is the distillation of, uh. Key points in the boards and committees letters, and then the earlier part is our own input from the select board. So.
All right. And I must say that, um, I had some thoughts about it too. So I went. Kind of beyond some of the boards and committees.
Yeah.
And put in what I, I trust you will totally agree with. Uh, as far as, uh, my analysis of it is.
I, I fully support it as well, Marion. I think, I think you did a great job with it. So I think Paul was about to make a motion, so it's still his thunder. So go ahead, Paul.
I was gonna move a pro, rule of the letter and authorize, uh, uh, Marion and Jeff to send it.
Second.
Marion?
I, of course.
George, George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Marion and I should recuse ourselves. I, I, I am I as well. And we, I've already talked to Diane this afternoon about, she's, I think, developed a distribution list of who we need to send it to also. So, uh, we can talk in the morning, Marion.
Yeah, okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good. After all that work, I'm not going to recuse myself.
I, I gotta follow the Chuck Yan example. You're up, Jeremy.
Yeah, um, yeah, I've, I'm brought this forward for your consideration. Um. I've been on the, the town of Medfield's warrant committee for about five years now. Um, and in that time, I'm actually the, of the nine of us on the. Warrant committee, which is our version of an advisory committee or a finance committee. I'm actually the second longest serving on the committee currently. Um, and I'm appointed by the town moderator. Um, I have stepped down as the chair. Um, however, the moderator has requested that I continue on with the committee for some continuity, um, and to help, um. You know, coach and guide some of the, the newer members on the committee. So I'm willing to do that. My term, uh, my current term, I think ends at the end of two thousand twenty-three. But also I would like to join the Massachusetts Municipal Management Association. Uh, that's the association that covers town administrators in the Commonwealth. Uh, and they actually have a code of ethics, uh, and, and some guidelines that go along with that, that require, um, the appointing board. Uh, in this case, you folks to approve by vote, um, if I serve on a, an appointed or elected committee in the town that I live in. So, um, uh, requesting the board consider that and, and, uh, consider a vote to support my continued, um, involvement on the town of Medfield's warrant committee.
I'll make a motion to approve that. I think, I think it brings, um, some great perspective to our town. With the service that you do to your other town. So, and as long as it doesn't conflict with our meetings, which I don't think it does on Thursday nights, then, then. I, I fully support this and I'll make a motion to approve it. And I just want to comment that I think it's great that Jeremy actually is, um, going to that town administrator group as well because bring back. You know, absorb a lot of knowledge, um, professionally from that as well. And I have, you know, no doubt he'll be funny. He's, uh, he's an asset to Medfield as well. So I think it's a great thing to do. Keep them off yet, babe.
Paul, Paul, you had something you wanted to say also.
Oh, first I was seconding the motion.
Okay.
And secondly, I was gonna say that. That, uh, the fact that he's, uh, on the finance committee in Medfield actually benefits us in so many ways. George started to articulate that and, and Eric started to articulate that. I agree with everything I said. There's, there's more that I could add, but. The point is that this will benefit the town also, in addition to, depending, Jeremy. So I second the motion.
I concur. Jeremy, do they have, uh, our advisory committee, you can only serve two terms. Do they have, uh, uh, term limits for Medfield or no?
No, there's no term limits. We wear people out generally.
We wear them out in six years. We got, uh, just like tires, we need to retreads it in six years. So, um, we have a motion and a, a, a second. So Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
And I might as well. Thanks for bringing it, Jeremy, and thanks for all you're doing. So, um. Diane, who, who do we, is Diane Hook here or?
But I don't know if she could make it tonight. So.
Just make a motion for approval.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Wants me to talk tonight, so I'll mute.
Did someone, did someone second it already? All right, Marion, Marion?
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
I am I as well. Now we're down to the, uh, town meeting. I don't know if there's any updates on the warrant. We just reviewed it on Saturday. I don't know of any updates. Paul, you and I discussed this earlier this week. The planning board is going to be reviewing all of the zoning bylaw changes. Uh, I know they met Tuesday night. I'm not sure they reviewed it then, but they're going to be reviewing the ground mounted solar and there's two of the ones that, um. Jackie proposed that, that are sort of, uh, rewording, uh, or, uh, error corrections of the. Zoning bylaws and they're going to review and, um, hold a public hearing on all of them.
Yeah, I was going to say, I knew they had to do a public hearing.
Yeah, yeah. I, I talked to Chris Owen twice and, uh, Gino. I don't think any of them are here tonight that I see. They were earlier.
I have a question. Uh, why do we have to assign those, uh, warrant articles to planning board? Because didn't planning board bring them forth?
To know, they didn't bring the, um, the two of them are from Jackie.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yep.
It's a requirement and a practice and that's just that when. We receive any zoning article from whatever source, it could be from Gino, because it could be from the planning board, it could be from the board of appeals, whatever it comes from. You said it to the.
The planning board.
Planning board, so they can schedule a public hearing.
So we're just, we're, we're only really referring to of them because the ground mounted solar came from them.
Correct.
It still has to be recorded in the. Refer to them. Because that triggers the public hearing.
Yep. And they're already planning, uh, to do that from what I've heard from Gino.
All right. So I'll move that we do that.
Yep.
A second.
All right, Marion.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Uh, I am I as well. Wow, we're down to just select board reports. Do you have any?
Before we leave this, I.
Yeah.
Issue I had about dates.
Yeah.
So in the, in the, uh, um. Opening part of the meeting, we were dealing with the, the, uh, motion that approved. A whole bunch of things. Not mentioned is the schedule, this town meeting timeline. And I don't know whether that motion was approving the timeline or not approving that timeline, but my, my problem with that timeline is that it doesn't include. Things like planning board public hearing and a planning board notice. But the most important part is that we need to issue the warrant long. Earlier than what seems to be indicated in the, uh, timeline. In other words, we need to finalize this warrant before any of these public hearings, before the planning board's public hearing and before the. Advisory public hearing. And we also need to, to finalize whether we're going to be doing ballot questions or dead exclusions and so on. So this, there's all kinds of, um, dates. That are very important, that, that are not on the timeline. But just to give you a feel for what other communities do with timelines. Like the, the town of Canton closed their warrant on July tenth. And they are issuing their final warrant on January thirty-one. And the reason why you want to do a quick turnaround then is because if somebody comes in. With a new article and wants you to reopen the warrant and add a new article. You're in a position where you really can't say no, particularly if it's a citizen article. Uh, it, it's just much cleaner. Plus for zoning, the effective date of zoning is the date of the publication of the hearing notice. It's retroactive. So you want to have as early as possible, the, the, uh, issuance of the hearing notice so that. Developers don't jump the gun and try and beat the zoning and so on and so on. So for a lot of reasons, we should be issuing the warrant. Before the March advisory hearings. And if the planning board is having a hearing before that, it should be before the planning board here. I can't tell you what date it should be.
What, what have we historically done though? Because I know we've made a lot of changes leading up to.
We, we've done a lot of things last minute. I recall adding things in March. So.
So, I mean, that all sounds good and well, Paul, but I'm just. What have we done in the last few years?
Well, that's what Jeannie just put in the chat. She said the warrant has been in the past signed in the first meeting in March by the select board.
I'm looking at the participant list, looking for Bill Morik. I think this is Groundhog Day. Paul says this every year, but we don't actually have. Did you send your issues you had with that ground mounted solar, solar to our town council? If we want to get this warrant issued, we need to make sure we get the, our issues straightened with it.
Well, I, 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 my issue isn't really the wording. It just looked like it was a draft. And if you start publishing a draft, then really you're inviting developers to come in and try and change things. That's for the public hearing. Not, and that's for the motion that's made at town meeting.
I'm just saying you had an issue with the warrant. If we have an issue with the warrant, we need to address it.
If I may, town council has taken their first pass at review of, of the, the language of the warrant. We got some feedback. Um, late yesterday afternoon, have not yet provided that back to the select board yet. Um, and, uh, to note another thing as well, but before you, the, the way that you, it seems that you formulate your warrant. You've got some specific dollar amounts, especially for capital, um, that are contained in your warrant, which would need to be. Set and agreed upon, um, to, to close your warrant. So there, there's a, there's also that. Um, you need to accommodate that in your timeline as well. Um, approval of your capital items at a minimum.
Yeah, capital budget committee usually sometimes.
The way we handle that is that we have that, those numbers below the line. So we're supposed to. The way we design the warrant is it's supposed to be like an omnibus capital article. It's just, just says to, to, uh, spend money on capital. And then you, below the line after it says sponsored by the board of selectmen. There is usually a chart. Of what we're thinking about. As long as it's below the line, we can change the numbers at any time. If it's above the line, you're stuck with those numbers. So if between the time you issued the warrant and, and town meeting, you, you actually get some quotes, then the quotes are different numbers. You're stuck. So we do the chart, we, we've, we've accommodated those, those arcane rules by having the chart be not. Literally part of the, of the warrant, it's part of. Right below the warrant, right below the article.
Understood.
Which can be changed.
Good practice.
So Paul, do you want to, uh, draft edits you propose to the schedule? You don't have to have the dates, but do you want to add? Create a, a version of the schedule that has all the, uh, steps in it that you feel are necessary?
Well, I think we got to be keeping track of things. Like if the planning board is having a hearing. Tomorrow, let's say on, on, on the, the town clerks articles. I've never seen the town clerks articles. I have no idea and I don't think they have. So they're holding a hearing to get public comments on something that nobody has seen. I mean, what?
This is why I asked you to look into this on Monday, but you opted not to do that. So we're not doing that. Jackie, did you want to add something?
Um, yes, thank you. Um, I just, I just wanted to say that from my recollection, I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection is that. Um, from submitting stuff to the attorney general's office after town meeting is that the hearings, um. Uh, the planning board normally has the hearings in February. Um, also Gino was a huge part conservation. Um. Uh, I had about a hundred and forty questions that I had to go through for the certification project and Gino was a big part of that. So, um. They, they are aware of, um, the language and I apologize that I did not get it to the board. I, I gave it to Jeremy. Um, earlier, I, on Tuesday, and then I also gave it to Gino, but, um, but Gino's been a part of this. Conversation for months and months. So he is, he's been, um, a big part of the conversation and basically. What's going to, those two articles, um, for zoning and for the general, it's, it's basically corrections. On spelling errors, mass general laws that have been, that are, that have been repealed. It's very simple stuff. That, those corrections. Um, and I will have a list of those from general code, the vendor. To present at town meeting so that people that are voting, they will have them. But that's basically what the, it's corrections like therefore with the knee. And therefore with noe actually means two different things. We have statue instead of statute. And so it's, a lot of it is just spelling, spelling errors and grammatical errors, and that's what's going to be changed.
Jackie, does this correct when it refers to like the board of selectmen and we're now the select board, those kind of things?
Correct. Exactly. Or a mass general law, like for instance, um, our bylaw for the dogs. Says, um, if you read the bylaw for the dogs, it says all dogs three months or older need to be licensed. Per Sherwin bylaw and mass general law, da, 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 da. Well, the mass general law now says it's six months. It's not three months. So. Those are the kinds of things that are getting corrected. So like the, the dog thing will change from, you know, all dogs six months and older will be. Well, because that, that's what the master on the law is. So we're, we're just, we're just catching up all those things that, that have just. Slipped through the cla, cracks over the.
Housekeeping, I call it exactly.
There, there, it's housekeeping. That, that's, that's what they are for both the general and the zoning bylaws.
Uh, Jackie, just to. Uh, am I recognized?
Jeff? Yes, go ahead, Marion.
Okay. Uh, to, to clarify something, when I saw this, it reminded me that several years ago. The state was going to require towns to reorganize their zoning bylaws. And their zoning regulations, which are not bylaws, but regulations. Uh, in a totally different way, such that they were, uh, integrated together. With a completely different numbering system that was going to be determined by the state. Uh, does this have anything to do with that? Because that was a major, uh, a major overhaul.
The, the, we, we will be, it will be a numbering system. Yes. So, so one, but one bylaw. Is to correct all the housekeeping errors, spelling errors, grammar, grammatical errors, mass on the laws. And then the second arti, the second article, um, and also it, it will be to accept the by, to accept the certification project and the numbering. So, yeah, it'll like, I think zoning changes to like two forty. So it, it's all part of that. And there's about a hundred and thirty-two towns that general code has already done. Has already done, um, everybody had, they have code. So it'll be searchable online. It'll be easy. For people to find them rather than trying to read through, you know, a document. It'll be online and searchable. It'll be online and searchable.
Okay, but uh just, uh, I can see that, but uh just to be clear, it does not involve changing the content of the zoning bylaw, because the original proposal was to integrate the regulation, the zoning regulations, which are not bylaws and can be changed.
Regulations will be updated as well. So any regulations that, any, any regulations um that zoning conservation and um, I mean, planning board conservation and the board health, those regulations will be updated.
Yeah, what I'm getting at is are regulations still distinct from uh, from bylaws?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Okay, good.
So Jeff, my, my point was the, 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 I'm just talking about the calendar.
Yes, I got it.
I, I want to add that we i- issued the warrant by March first. I want to add the date of the planning board hearing. I just don't know what that is. Uh, I want to add the date of publication of the notice of the planning board hearing. I, I don't know.
My point, my point is, Paul, it would be much better if you could just email the five of us and uh Jackie and whoever else, Diane and Jeremy, the, the dates you want to add.
I don't know the date. I, I don't know what the dates are.
No, I don't mean with the dates, but the, the dates that need to be shown. Not the actual date, but what, what you just said in words, could you put in writing?
Yes.
Please.
And, and Paul, if you want to move the warrant along, help, help out. And I hate to say it, but we said it at the public hearing on Saturday. You've had all these issues with that ground mounted solar one, but you're never willing to actually email the town council and say what your issues are.
I, I, I don't have an issue with.
Bring up these issues at the end. So just email them if you have issues with it.
I, I, I don't have issues with the war.
Okay, then, then. I'm sorry, I just don't like the waste of time of the over lawyering stuff, when if you don't actually have issues with it, don't bring it up.
But, but it would also help if you could just submit what you want in writing to them, and there won't be any confusion. It will save, it actually saves time by being um specific of what, you don't have to have the date dates, but the, the dates that need to be listed, and we'll get the date dates in there, if that makes sense.
Right. I mean, it would even be better if Paul could uh talk to the planning board and, 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 and make sure that they have mapped out their dates.
Instead of just announcing it at our meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then bring those planning board dates uh back, so we have dates, because I mean, somebody's got to take charge, but there's not going to get done.
Right. A lot of us do a lot of work outside of our meetings, and, and it doesn't hurt to communicate with these other boards. If you have issues with what they're doing, talk to them and get it done, instead of just talking about it at our meeting.
All right.
So.
So is there any action to be taken at this point, or is this, is it effect uh what we presented in the next meeting, Paul's concern here? Okay.
Well, we, we need to uh expand the date list a little bit, and Paul, are you uh able to produce the dates that you think need, need to be included that aren't there already?
Another one is the date that we have to do the uh, the decision on overrides.
Yeah, you don't have to tell us them all right now. Just get them all to uh, get them all to, to um uh Jackie, and then we, on our December, I mean, just to me, December, on uh, uh February, what is it, the second, is that our next meeting? Um, we can look at the updated calendar.
Okay, like six dates there.
Okay, good. And I think it would be good to talk with Chris Owen and just make sure that they have the hearing scheduled, and that'll be one of your dates. Thank you.
That's, I think, one of the planning board hearing, yeah.
All right, so maybe check with Chris so that we can get that date also. He, he's aware that we want it to be on our calendar. All right. Anything else on the uh annual town meeting that we want to talk about? All right, good. So now we're to select board reports. Anyone have any select board reports?
No.
No.
We are going to be moving books in.
I, I just want to say, I do want to say thanks to Dan Cycle. He helped me a lot with, made a presentation last night to the teachers' union about.
Oh, good. Yeah, yeah.
Presentation uh to, to describe where we're at in Sherburne and where our five-year budget projection looks, and I, I, that was very helpful. So I just want to say thank you to him.
Thanks, George.
That's good. Was it the same one we saw on Saturday or a different one?
Yeah, he pretty much used the same presentation.
Yep.
As a view of the school committee members, like they said, that was very helpful, because it was something that was public and not
Yeah.
specifically designed to them to make things potentially look worse, you know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly. No, I could get it completely.
True, public presentation that was right for everyone, not just the school committees.
Exactly. Um, so I don't have any select board reports. Anyone else? How about uh Jeremy? Do you have a town administrator report or anything that you want to update us on?
Yeah, just a couple of updates. Um, an update on the, the update to the what town's website. Uh, we've gotten a, a proposal from um the current vendor that we utilize. Um, it, it looks pretty good. Um, they are proposing a six-month implementation. And it, it would be, they would move the town's website from its current platform, which is an older version of their, of their platform to their most current, which would make it more informative, more flexible, would be ADA compliant. Um, it had multiple language choices. Have a better backend. I think it would, would help us um, you know, clean up a lot of the old content as well. Um, they're suggesting we actually limit, we have too many pages currently on the town's website, and they'd like, they suggest that that be pared down through this process, but it would be a six-month-long process involving um a fair amount of input from, from many stakeholders, so. Uh, and you know, maybe we can win a award, and an award just like um was one, uh, when you implemented your current website, there was an award uh given, so maybe uh, we'll, we'll shoot for that. Um, and uh, so Jeannie and I are, are moving forward and asking some of the department heads if they would like to be on a, a small working group to update the town's website. Uh, and just an update on the, the meeting, the second floor meeting room uh and the audio issue that we, we had for our meeting this past Saturday. I think we've identified what that, that problem is. Uh, and have identified a new, some new hardware that we can purchase through some uh uh remaining balance and some grants. So um just want to update the board there. Hopefully we can get that solved, and so um, future meetings like that will have, will have no issue.
I think it'll be better to, Rick Terrera found a cable that he didn't know he had until after everyone left, and he and I were the only ones left there. So I think that might help also.
It could help.
He didn't have it hardwired, so that'll be good. And then also, one thing I want to let people know is that Dan can confirm this, the advisory public hearing is going to be on Zoom also. It's not going to be in person.
Yes, we're going to do it on Zoom on, on March eighteenth, yes.
So one thing we could do, we could, we can all just dial in from home, but if we felt we wanted to, we could just effectively have some people be in the select board meeting room by participating on Zoom that way. Uh, if you wanted to, but other than that, it'll be a, a purely um, uh, virtual Zoom meeting. And it's moved up a week to the, I think it's the eighteenth of March. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Moved.
Second.
All right. Great job, guys. Marion?
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
And I am I as well. And Diane and Jeremy, thank you for keeping us on the straight and narrow here. Hanging there, hanging there, guys. Thank you.
Very good.
Ciao.